United States of America, two republics which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I know.
I go ahead.
Yoder?
Here.
Nuna?
Here.
Black?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Brush, absent prior notice. Fennel?
Here.
Lautner?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Nixon?
Here.
And Creepy?
Here.
That's an excellent form. All right, next up, we have our agenda in front of us. Are there any additions or deletions? What's been written already?
We'll approve the agenda as presented.
All right.
There's four seconds.
All right. Mr. Noon is supportive of the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor who signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Great. Next up, we have conflict of interest. Do we have any commissioners here that have a conflict with any items on the agenda here tonight? Assuming not, who want to call the comment? We got none. Staff comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I'm happy to announce that Jenny Herman is now the CEP planner.
Hey, congratulations.
I'm going to be a planning secretary now. Also, a couple of things. We are working on the annual report, so hopefully next month we'll have that, and also the CIP.
Perfect. Any questions for staff? Next up, we have our February 27th meeting minutes in front of us. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review them. Now, I'll take a motion. Where are the others?
Let's approve the minutes.
I support it.
Yeah, April 23rd, 2024 presented.
February 27th, also?
Yes, thank you.
Most of the main. Most of the main by Commissioner Roberts, supported by Mr. Nixon to approve the February 27th meeting minutes as presented. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor who signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All both same sign. Period. Here on a new business, item one, Elmwood Township text amendment definitions. I will let staff lead on with their report, and then we'll.
So this request, as you can see, was received last month, the day after we canceled our meeting due to lack of business. So that's why last day of review is April 19th. The Elmwood Township master plan does not specifically address this amendment, and neither does the Elmwood master plan. The township had a public hearing on December 19th. After much deliberation, the public hearing was closed and more information was requested. Our discussion continued at the January 16th planning commission meeting, a second public hearing was scheduled due to changes made to the proposed amendment. And after the second public hearing on February 20th, they cast a motion to forward that here to the county for review. Section four is our analysis, and we did not find any issues there. Moving on, section five, staff comments. The proposed amendments will add the following definitions: active farm operation, festival, and special event facilities. It will also amend Article 5, the land use in zoning district table there to add a new number 74. With the special event facility. Also, that's to amend Article 6. To add minimum required parking spaces for special event facilities. I amend Article 9, special land uses, additional requirements for certain special land uses H. Going to add requirements for special event facilities as follows. Section 5, history. At the May 23rd, Township Planning Commission, John Gallagher Jr. submitted a request for a zoning ordinance amendment to reintroduce special event facilities as a special use within the AR zoning district. In October of 2019, the County Planning Commission reviewed a proposed amendment to remove specialty event and special event facility. It was noted in this prior staff report that the township had talked about special events quite a bit in the past five years, and based on recommendations from the township attorney, changes needed to be made. The township attorney recommended removing the language from the ordinance while they worked on the changes. The township committee minutes indicated the size of the parcel was a concern, and that they would like it used to be supplemental to A. And he submitted as a special use permit. Most of the township is own agricultural, and they want to serve the agricultural and rural heritage of the township. At the September 26th, Township Planning Commission needed JMO design group presented an application on behalf of Gallagher Farms LLC for a distillery located on an 80 acre parcel in AR zoning district. It was noted that the cherry improved production of the Gallagher Farm is what will be used for the production of product. And this application was approved with 11 conditions. The discussion of the public hearing in September 19th revolved around the square footage requirement, and it was decided that more research and information was needed. It was determined at the January 16th meeting that another public hearing was needed due to changes made, proposed text amendments. After the second public hearing, October 20th was closed, it was a lengthy discussion, after which it was recommended to approve the proposed text amendment and forward to the county for review.
All right, thank you. On to commissioners. Commissioner Roberts, would you give it to you?
Yeah, I think this is probably long overdue, and I do appreciate the, their idea of trying to preserve rural agriculture. What I wasn't clear on is this, these events can only be on ag land? Or can it be on a 40 acres that is an open space or wooded or something along that line, but not ag? Are these specifically just targeting ag land? Because if it comes to the preservation of land, that's, that's really what's behind. Yes, we like to see crops growing, we like to see orchards, we love to see vineyards, we love to see hayfields, we love to see wheat fields, but sometimes it's a field or partially wooded. So is that not allowed? And I wasn't clear on it, but I didn't have the whole. Does anybody know? Is anybody?
Put your notes in the minutes and spend all of it.
That was it. And then the only other question I had is, is, because he's been operating already. They wanted to remove it and maybe make it more applicable? Is that their idea?
The distillery?
No, the, the event, special events, the facility. I think they've worked on that for a while.
Is that what Gallagher?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there, it was removed on 2019?
Yes.
I don't know. They're going to sign when I went. I was in June.
Yeah, that's right, I live in July.
All right, Mr. Creepy?
No comment.
Mr. Noon? Tom Brode? Mr. Brown? Mr. Nunn?
I would just say that it's a reasonable effort to provide new business opportunities, protecting the adjacent properties.
Mr. Nixon?
Yeah. Couple of observations and comments. I first found they were very generous in the material they sent us. Supporting material, particularly in minutes. They want a pretty good insight into some of the decisions they had to make, and I appreciate on page eight, under 2H, sound. That's a difficult concept to wrestle with, to control sound and special events. And I particularly appreciate the fact that they're using a standard that probably, in some fashion, should be incorporated in here called plainly audible. Plainly audible is a standard that's pretty universal in our court system, for defending language that allows you to use your own unaltered hearing device. In other words, your own faculties. And plainly audible would be a term, somehow I think they might want to incorporate in H, because it implies any reasonable person of normal sensitivity. And I would think, given the respect they show to their attorneys, that the attorneys are probably familiar with the term plainly audible. But I would just suggest that. And some confusion for me, fear in mind, just be grabbed, under J, in all the subsections. J says the duration of the special event shall last, or shall not last longer than 12 hours and occur on one day. Pretty clear language. Until I go to the top of the other page, Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 11:00, 10:00 PM is 13 hours. And Friday, Saturday, and federal holidays, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM are 14 hours. So I'm not sure if that included setup in their thinking, or whether it was just a misperception. And the last comment I make on this one would be, under K1, a maximum of 52 special events in the calendar year. Struck me as pretty liberal, pretty accessible.
Yeah.
I don't see language, or I haven't seen language, I don't know about our planners. Nice to say the word planners with an S now. That 52 special events is typical. I think it's, it's, it's a large number. But yes, this community may feel that's appropriate for them. That would conclude my comments.
Miller?
I'm reading the active farm operation under section 5, and it seems a little odd. If you have dairy cows raised regularly, milk, and milk has historically been commercially sold. Why commercially sold? If they were giving it away to tour, then they couldn't have cows? And then, then three, beef cattle farms, cows raised historically commercially sold and slaughtered. What about other livestock such as bison, goats, hogs? You can't have them in an active farm operation based on its limitation to cows only. And then we talk about four other types of specialty farms such as deer elk or pheasant farms, animals are raised and historically been commercially harvested by private hunting or other means. I don't know whether that's in conflict with the use of guns on that property or not, but it just active farm, turn it into a hunting camp, seems not to be quite in line with active farm operation. And then I go further down page, on page seven, and I'm not sure that I understand what it's named. Special event facility, minimum number of spaces required, one space for every three people allowed. Wait, I'm sorry. No, I understand that parking, but maybe that is the one I read. I'm sorry, I was reading this earlier, I didn't even know. I'm sorry, it was a different place from parking, a different item, that's. My comments for that one. It's what?
Mr. Fennel?
I do have a couple of comments related to Mr. Nixon comments. Not sure, just right along. Sorry. When you mentioned the historical use of a farm, it seems very vague to me. You know, historically, like 20 years ago, it was, could, does that, I mean, that's what that word means to me. I think they need to have some kind of, you know, ratio of the last 10 years that at least, you know, five of the items, it's their plan, but it seems too vague. And maybe what they need to do is make an additional definition with that term, defining it specifically, if they'd like to, because otherwise I could see that being an issue. I also had some issue with, I mean, I appreciate that they're trying to, it would be, sorry, under the page eight, under subsection two, all the way down to H and, and both beyond. So H, you know, no sounds. I, I mean, I'm not sure if the language that Mr. Nixon suggested would be appropriate, but that just seems again, too vague. I don't know how you would be able to enforce that. You know, if there's music and you can, you can hear the beat, but you can't hear the words. I mean, at what point does it become a nuisance? And, and so, you know, below that, you have J. I am fine with, but J, again, the 12 hours in a day, that makes sense, but then you go right underneath that, and it talks about obviously longer periods of time than 12 hours. And I'm not sure if what they're referring to is the actual, like, business hours that they would be available at that location, and the event itself can only be 12 hours? Because obviously staff has to be there to potentially set up for said event, which I think they said that, that there can be an hour before or after, so that would maybe make sense why there's this 14 hour window. But again, I think that to be concise and clear would be helpful. And the last thing that I would just comment is that a lot of this, I feel like would be a full-time job to try and track around. I don't know how many special events happen in Elmwood Township, but maybe there'll be 100 every month, or I have no idea. But is this going to be the planning commission's job now to go around and police all of this? And otherwise, whose job would that be? And maybe they're hoping that just having this laid out and making proper agreements with the landowner and, you know, property managers prior to those events, that they have at least some say, and if they mess up, maybe they don't get approved in the future. But it all seems a little vague to me. And that follows right into, you know, 52 events. I mean, that seems pretty excessive to me, if this is just like a special one, that's even more like a designated place that you, that you wedding every weekend throughout the year. I mean, that seems more like a designated event space than some kind of special use thing. So that's just my opinion on that. I'm sure that they have a reason why they picked that number. And then B is the very last one. Contact information for onsite special event manager is different from owner. I have no problem with that, but I feel like that should be like way at the top. Who are you contacting to have, you know, potential disruption or, you know, violation of these things? You know, you've got to have a number for that person, and that person needs to be aware that they could be contacted. I mean, these are all suggestions, but that I found that whole section below J to be, just, or sorry, below H and below, to be just problematic potentially for them. And again, whose job is they're going to be running around, keeping track of all this stuff? So those are my comments.
All right, sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, something to Brian's comment. I think he brings up a good point this. All of the items in L, in management plan, the following shall be provided to whom? That's, needs to be addressed. Provided to whom? Contact information, number, all of the I through V. I, one through five.
Yeah.
What?
So just to be clarified in there, that it should be submitted to the PA or zoning portion of the office.
You remember?
Yeah.
All right. I'll piggyback just one last thing. I think that's maybe important, exactly along the same lines as that, is what's the timeline for this? You know, they give you the, the management plan and all this stuff, like the day before they plan to have this event? I mean, I'm assuming they want more time to like double check stuff than that, and so it would be probably wise to have some kind of time in terms of, you have to have this to us two weeks in advance or something like that.
Do you have to provide it once a week if you're going to have 52 events?
All good, all good comments. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, thank you. This is what I love about the whole process, is because we all see different things. I had read the active farm operation paragraph, and was thinking more along the line of, well, there isn't really nurseries either, and nurseries now are a, a big active farm operation. Well, maybe it just slides under the fruits, vegetables. But I did miss pigs, yeah, pigs and goats and lambs are big, so big operations.
And maybe it's just a function of indicating livestock.
Well, and, and the, with the row crops, you know, it does say et cetera, but it really doesn't say et cetera for the general farm animals that goes into the specialty. So that's very interesting. I think also, Brian, you had, the same thing I thought when I read it was that those are the hours of operation, but your event might be different. Maybe your event is, you know, only 11 till 7, but as long as it's within that window, that's okay, so. I, but I, but I'm not sure, and I thought that that was very interesting too, is, is outside of setup and takedown. How does that work? But now the 52 events a year, I do know sometimes they will have a Friday and a Saturday wedding, or Saturday and a Sunday wedding, or maybe a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So I would expect those 52 events are all in the summer or the warmer months, I do believe. But I also think, and they being this particular one discussed, I think it's two, they can run two events at a time. If I'm not mistaken, so that really doubles up things. Or at least the one operation I'm thinking of does.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, not, I will take a motion.
I make a motion to send our staff comments and commissioner comments to Elmwood Township.
All right. Okay, Mr. Noon is supportive of Mr. Miller. Over on the Elmwood Township text amendment definitions, any other discussion? All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Period. Next up, we have added to another Elmwood Township text amendment, multi-dwelling requirements, all staff.
This request was received on April 15th, the last day to review under the third date period is May 15th. And the Elmwood Township master plan does not specifically address this amendment, even as a general plan. Township had a public hearing on March 19th, at which time no public comment was received. Followed a public hearing, planning commission unanimously passed a motion to forward it on to the county for review. Section four, analysis, again, we did not find any issues there. Moving on to section five, staff comments. The proposed amendment will add the following definition: dwelling multi, a building or buildings on a single lot with at least two dwelling units, including any attached dwelling as defined in this ordinance. The proposed amendment will also modify definitions for parcel, lot, and lot area. And then I've shown you what the current definitions for the parcel and lot and lot area are. This amendment will amend those definitions to read parcel, C lot, lot, a parcel of land having credit along a road or right-of-way on which a principal use or uses and its accessory uses are located or intended to be located, together with any open spaces required by this ordinance. A slave condominium lot shall also be considered a lot for purposes of compliance with the regulations of this ordinance. Lot area, gross, the total horizontal area within the boundary lines of a lot, not including right-of-way easements. And lot area net, the lot area excluding unbuiltable areas of the lot. Could just be examples. The proposed amendment will amend Article 3, which right now is reserved. That will read as follows. Intent, intent of this section is to recognize a growing need for housing within the township, while at the same time encouraging sustainable multi-dwelling developments. So these developments do not overburden the lots on which they are located and do not cause any reasonably adverse impacts on the surrounding lots. Further, this section seeks to ensure that any multi-dwelling development of lots remains consistent with underlying dwelling requirements. Also, we'll get, continue on with the multi-dwelling development requirements. I don't think I need to read all of those. The proposed amendment will amend Article 5, use restrictions. On the table of dimension requirements, we're going to add a note, our footnotes. Note I, density, to read the maximum number of dwelling units permitted on a lot in any zoning district referenced in this table, so it applies with section 2.3.1.4 of this ordinance. And then I've shown you the current article sudden land development options, section 7.1.2, general requirement C, read. Moving on to the next page, amendment, we're going to amend that. So C will read residential base density, the maximum base residential density and number of permitted dwelling units shall be determined by dividing the total net lot area by the minimum lot size of the underlying zone district. And then I've shown you the current article sudden land development options, reads, this will be amended to read as follows. A residential density calculation, indicating the total number of dwelling units divided by the net lot area. Any more detailed residential density calculation that divides the number of a specific unit site by the net lot area associated with that specific unit site. And finally, the current article eight, site plan review, reads the gross and net acreage of the parcel, and that will be amended to read as follows, gross lot area and net lot area.
Is that all?
Really had nothing. I hope it's successful. It makes a lot of sense.
All right, Creepy?
Nothing further, David. Good, okay. Brown? Okay. Nunn? Section 3.1.4, bottom of page 38. Just a word that I, encouraging sustainable multi-dwelling developments. I don't know, it's a very subjective term. It's probably more acceptable with a master plan. I don't even know what that means, sustain. That's all.
All right, Mr. Nixon?
Just one comment, and I have to harp.
Just one comment, and I have to harken back to my. High school English composition teacher Ruth Sherman. Nicknamed the tank, that's another story. She impressed on us that one should never define a word. By using the word in the definition. In fact, I can see your glare right there. When you look on right under staff comments on the definition of dwelling. It says a building or buildings on a single lot with at least two dwelling units. Miss Sherman would be jumping in her grave right now. I suggest they change that to dwelling unit. Uh, to housing unit maybe, or domicile, or find another word that dwell. That will make Mrs. Sherman happy as far as myself.
The only thing I would have to say is. Being a realtor, I I recognize what they're trying to accomplish for the low income housing. But when you start putting several hundred and twenty square foot houses in into a parcel and you. And you found as many as you can by that division, by that division, division that they're using. I can see. Serious problems. We had this happen down where I moved from, Miss King County. And it ended up going before the voters. Because. They started the development. And they hadn't got that far into it and people just started clamoring. It just is, they just said, all you're going to do is bring in riffraff. I know there's a problem and there's a major issue, low income housing. But I I question the square footage, the size of a house that size. You think you're putting two people in there, you'll end up with six. And uh. A seven hundred and twenty square foot house. What happened when we went back to the voters in the Skating County and they raised it to. Considerably, almost ridiculously, the other way. The voters did because they were so upset. And uh. I don't know, it seems to me that seven hundred and twenty square foot is pretty tiny. I don't know if you've seen a seven hundred and twenty square foot house, this is correct or wrong. Yes, it's going to take something like that maybe to for low income, but how many of those do you want on a parcel? There's a limitation. They've got a number here that I I just. I hope they're using good wisdom. In what they're doing. The seven hundred and twenty square foot, you do a bunch of them on a parcel, you gotta, you gotta. They're opening up a real can of worms.
I'll try to make my comments short. Uh, I do a clause and they're attempting to. Come up with a solution, um, that seems to be everywhere, not just. But I was a little bit. Cause I'm not exactly sure why they want to. Be able to do a lot smaller, the exception. So it's number three, and then I guess really. Um, it ties into six as well under, sorry. Be multi dwelling development requirements. Minimum net lot area shall be twelve thousand five hundred, which I believe is about a quarter of an acre. So that's a fairly small lot. Um. And so then is it two that could be there? Cause it would be a multi, but not more than two. But then it says there's an exception for six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, which that's like. That's like an eighth of an acre, which is, for my understanding, that's pretty small. Um. I'd have to do the math, but I didn't, so um, shame on me. But I'm not sure that that would fit in with like. Right, so you divide that by eight. When you're making a seven hundred and twenty square foot home that has to fit. Red setback regulations and they, I don't know that that it would work. I'm not an expert on this stuff, but it just. It took me back to where like. Is that the day, did someone, I'm hoping someone did all the math on that and that, that would also what what um. What shape is the lot? Cause unless it's a square. You may have no, I don't, it may be tricky. I had a couple thoughts on that. Um. And then I also am more curious about their. Gross versus net and I've read about the why they came up with that in the the comments um. Between the township and uh, people that were trying to do this whole thing figured out. And. There's, I'm not clear on if they did, are they enforcing that it's got to be buildable land or are they not? I guess I wasn't clear on that because they talk about it, but then it doesn't seem to come up. And changes, at least, I mean, I could have missed it, but um. Cause that's important as well. If you have a lot that. You know, has some kind of topographical. Lot has water, has certain things that would make it. Uh, like you can't build there. Um, then that changes the whole dynamic of that lot and would, you know, potentially make it. Unusable the way they have this written out. Or would cause issues again to where you could actually have. Multi use or multi family dwell or whatever, multi dwellings on the same lot. Um, so. Those are my concerns.
I guess I have a question. And the way I was reading this. I was reading it as multi dwellings, not single family houses. So there wasn't multiple houses on a lot, but a multi dwelling being like attached dwellings. And I, do they, Gil, do they somewhere else in here refine?
Old units, or eight?
I understand that, but are they attached or are they detached? I'm I'm wondering if they're talking about attached units, like apartment. Building. Even with, you know, outside entrances and all.
Yes, one thing too that I've noticed is they cannot address parking or anything like that, you know, to accommodate vehicles.
Right over my head, but I appreciate.
Sewage and water, that's another issue.
I think Brian, maybe in response to your concern about unbuildable lot, I think in the definition of lot area. Page forty-three. It does, but it doesn't go far enough as you're pointing out. It doesn't say, so what if? It doesn't allow them to, allow the reader to understand if those items are withdrawn, then what actually is buildable. That's, I think, your point, that you need to have some. Way and measure is this lot suitable for what? A large community can support. But it does express in there about wetlands and. Not buildable parcels, but it doesn't go far enough.
Any other comments?
I move it before staff comments and commissioner comments on the Elwood Township.
All right, next up we have item three on the text amendment, alcohol requirements. So step for you.
This request from Elwood Township was received on April fifteenth. The last date of review is May fifteenth, under thirty-eight period. Again, the Elwood Township master plan is not specifically addressed this amendment, and neither does it belong to our plan. A public hearing was held on March nineteen, at which time no public comments were received, followed with a public hearing. And the commission passed a motion forwarded on here to the county for review. Section four analysis, again, we did not find any issues there. So we have the section five, staff comments. The proposed amendment will add the following definitions. Alcohol, beer, brewer, brewery, distiller, microbrewer, small distiller. Well, winemaker, spirits, tasting room, and winemaker. Also amend the following definitions. As follows. I'm going to delete the following definitions. Distillery, tasting room. Wine brandy, wine drink, mixed wine related beverages, wine tasting room. Uh, the proposed amendment will amend article five use restrictions. Uh, the land use and zoning district table in that article. Going to eliminate microbreweries, distilleries regulated by Michigan liquor control commission. Use number seventy-eight wine tasting room. And it will create a new use number forty-nine, distillery and or brewery. Use number seventy-four tasting room. Change permitting process for use number seventy-nine winery. Read as follows, here in the chart. The proposed amendment will also delete number five and number six from section five point five special requirements for specific uses, K. Number five is additional agricultural products may be sold at first stand. Provide, provided it is grown or produced in Elwood Township. And number six. Sale and craft items presented to those produced on the property will be deleted. The same section will also be amended to create a new five point five N. Read as follows, the winery, distillery, brewery, intent. Conditions. And the next page. The proposed amendment will amend article six. Section six point one point three space required, table as follows. Wine tasting room will be amended to read as follows. Moving on to the last page. The amendment will, the amendment will remove requirements for distillery tasting rooms from section nine point eight. L, distillery tasting rooms. And replace it as follows, the simple L, reserve.
Nothing added to reserve, the simple reserve. All right, Michelle.
Um, so the, um, when they take out the, when they needed. Like the crap items live under, um, just number five and number six, special requirements. Were, are those deleted because they're used by right? Like, no, that's why we deleted those. Is there allowed under, um. Under. Right to farm, to do those two?
Or is it saying that they? They're deleted because they don't have to be produced on the property?
Well. Good question, yeah. Um, under, under your right to farm, they have to be. A product of what you raise or grow there. So in which case, if it is something that's not raised or grown or or produced there, is that allowed? That would, that's, that is all.
This, this was kind of a more interesting read for me. I just kind of wondered. What, what is to get at the whole thing, but I don't have any real objections to what they want to do.
Piggybacking on his comment as well, I I find it interesting. It's kind of the first one that we've seen where they're wrestling with these words and. Changing, you know, wine tasting room to ta- tasting room so that you got to include spirits and whiskey and all those things. So. I applaud them for kind of maybe getting ahead to some of this stuff, or, you know, maybe they've had somebody ask questions about it. Maybe it's because of. Gallagher is trying to do some different things and and whatnot that spurred some of this, but um, I applaud them for that.
I would just suggest they apply the Ruth Sherman standard of defining words. Recheck some of those definitions, be sure they're really clear.
Two things, when I look, read the. Make sure now the number is on page fifty-nine at the top, distillery. A facility licensed by Michigan Liquor Control Commission where agriculture products are grown and were maintained. And used by distillers and or small distillers to manufacture spirits or alcohol, to sell the spirits. Or alcohol manufactured by the distiller or small distiller. I've read that a number of times. I have no idea what it's saying. Do they have to grow all the ingredients that they're using on their agricultural or? What is it saying? I have no idea. And. When I read a definition and I have no idea what it means, I think that possibly it's maybe, I think it's really the definition. Is defective. Is there sister Ruth? The other question that I have is on page sixty-one. Distillery and brewing minimum required five spaces, and I know they're talking about parking, certainly are. One per employee on larger shift.
Oh, it's five plus six.
Five spaces plus one per employee on larger shift. What does that mean? When they have five employees. Their highest count of employees is five, they need five spaces or that's whatever. It's, I think it's awkwardly written. Maybe numbers bases equal to. The number of employees on the larger ship, this is. It's not definitive.
Well, as someone who works in this city, uh, winery, so I've worked with industry and also familiar with distilling and. Like a meat and all this stuff. Uh, I think they did a really good job. They covered their bases. Uh, I'm. Thinking that, that uh, Nina was probably right that uh. That they're just getting ahead of seeing some of these. Land use permits and stuff come in and it's, it hasn't slowed down yet. I still see vineyards going in. I still see wineries opening up. There is going to be. A ceiling somewhere. We haven't found it yet, apparently. They keep going up. Um, so I, I think they're just. Seeing that in their future and thinking, let's just tackle this right now over on the subject. Um. There was a little bit of confusion that's been pointed out. Um, ultimately. I don't have any issues with it. I think they should have separate definitions for tasting rooms and wineries. Cause a lot of times these things become all stuck together and, you know, they say you can only be open from ten AM to ten PM. Well, that's their tasting. So obviously if you have staff working like I do in winery production. When harvest comes, you're going to be working more than ten to ten, I'll just tell you that. Uh, for experience, but they've thought that out. So that's actually under a different umbrella because it's defined as. Something else. So winery, tasting room, all these terms really should be separated out. And defined individually. And so I think they did a great job.
All right. Yeah, no, Mr. Nunes' point I got, whenever I read it, it kind of, it appeared to me as they were cleaning up some of the. Over language to more up to date terminology. So that's kind of how I read it, just kind of. Yeah, you know, I thought that it's good. Do you have any more comments or questions? All right, if not, I will take a motion.
Your motion to send all staff and commissioner comments, um, to Elwood Township.
Thanks for that. All right, most made in defense, board of Mr. Nixon. For capital requirements on to Elwood Township text, uh, the tax amendments, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify with the same eye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Very. This is while we're on that, I'll just make a note, I, I really liked how staff kind of cleaned that up and put it all in their staff report, and kind of condensed everything down, you didn't have to read the entire document, you could just read that, so I appreciate I really cleaned that up, and it was easier to read that way, so. All right, next up, we are on to reports, um, housing actions, may, Mr. Lovin.
As I said last month, we don't begin until May.
Um, I'm a two person, right, may, it's good.
I'm not a lot to report, I mean, again, next week, um, there's not a ton going on right now, we have a little bit of a actually, I have to talk to you after the meeting, that there's a there's a small chunk of Old Southers Park that is across the road, there's a little triangle piece, and there's a couple of driveways there that are on that property, and there's one guy that wants to pave this driveway, so at least he has an ingress and ingress easement, but I didn't, I never realized how the property lines laid until uh, just recently, and I, I have, the stakes aren't there, but according to the Onyx Hunt map, the property line goes on an angle like right across the face of his house, so all of this, like, the property line goes right through his landscaping and everything, so it's, this is the only access to his property is across that, but whether whether it needs to be paved or not, that'll be a discussion for the parks direct commission. There's multiple driveways that go across that, that property, and, uh,
Easement is good till twenty seventy-seven or something.
Yeah, it's something very long, and it was, I think it was done in the sixties, like almost a hundred, yeah. Um, so it's, it's been something that has come up before, this is the first time that I've really had to deal with this since I've been on the commission, but I remember my grandpa talking about it before, and, uh, people wanting to they get kind of grumpy when you tell them no. Yeah, so I, I, I've talked to the gentleman a couple times, he's supposed to be in a meeting next week, and
It is a, if I may.
Yeah.
It, it's a hilly, Pete, it's a hill.
Yeah, it's a
And it's really, as, as Casey said, it's an odd angle, it's really not worth anything as far as park land goes. Uh, there's nothing we can do with it. Not parking, not picnicking, um, you know, yeah. Maybe in seventy-seven they'll buy it.
Well, you can sell it to them now if you wanted to, but
I think they'll probably do it.
But there's, I don't know if it really needs to be paved or have a asphalt on it, because it's such a steep slope, but
Yeah.
Anyways, it'll be interesting to talk about.
All right, any questions for Mr. Nunes? All right. Now, we are on to communications.
I don't know if anybody's Yeah, well Jenny made this handy little chart here of all our question dates, if anyone's interested. And also I went to the conference. And, uh, scholarship award.
Yeah, I see that.
I'm sure she'd be happy to print it off a picture of her.
I said, uh, I said, I'm telling this to everybody, and she said, what do you mean, who's everybody?
She looks
We had that wonderful thing called spam, that's bombarded. I don't know what.
Yeah, I did take a picture of that, because I saw that, and there was paper. That she recorded that, so.
Yeah.
Twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sounds good, anything more communications? Any questions for staff? Yeah, well, none of the, that graph, it's very simple, and so we're in our forward, we know exactly when it is. All right, public comment, we have none, staff comments, any more to add?
I forget who else.
All right. So we are on to commissioner comments, um, Mr. Lovin.
Yes, um, congratulations, Jenny, good work ladies on packet. Um, I just wanted to share that I had the opportunity to, to have to hang out in Empire Village Sunday afternoon, and walked down to the baseball diamond area. And I don't know if anybody has been there, but it's really cool, if you can get down there and see it, there's like a paved loop, I would guess it a quarter mile paved loop. And they have an entire gym, gymnasium, or workout center in stations that can go around this loop, so you can stop, and they've got, um, like the they're all, they've all fancy names, but it, it tells you what muscles you're working if you do the foot pedaling, and then you can go to another one that's chin ups and pushups, and you go on down the line, and it'll be a hand bicycle thing. Um, there's uneven bars, like you would use if, if you're having trouble with balance, or like if you're in a wheelchair trying to freedom to walk. Um, different swings. Um, and it, it's really cool, so if you get an opportunity and you're over at Empire, go down and check, and walk that loop and see this. It, it's, it really, it would be just an awesome thing if, for someday we could get that at our one mile walking, you get miles Kimberly. Um, someday, I don't know if it was, if they used urban dollars, or, uh,
I don't remember where the funding, that's, that's the village that did that.
It was village, okay.
Yeah, um, I don't know where the funding came from.
Or if it was a grant, it's pretty cool, so.
I think there were some grand dollars involved, some township dollars, some village dollars, township. But it is a really convenient and it's pretty well used. I didn't think it'd get that much use, but more popular, obviously more so in the, it'll sound a little more important.
I'm checking out.
Where is it located?
In Empire, if you go, Casey, if I say, what's
Uh, so if you come into Empire on twenty-two, uh, you have to turn and go towards North Bar, I don't know if you've ever been that way.
Pass the church.
Turn onto La Cor, by the fire hall.
Yeah.
And the, you go down just a little ways, and it's on the right hand side.
That's an artifact.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Tricky.
Uh, just, uh, due to on the congratulations for the fire.
Thank you.
I have nothing to, for, for now.
Mr. N. Mr. Brown.
Just a few real mission things, uh, we completed, uh, bridge deck work in Cedar. Back towards middle of the month. Uh, so we see now, we have no more concerns of whether that bridge is gonna be bolstered or not, or weight limits, so. All that. Upcoming projects, we're still trying to put them in queue and figure out where we're gonna do, or where we're gonna
Mr. Nixon. Sir. Mr. Bell.
Nothing further for me.
All right. I know I reported last, last time we met, that we had a reselling administrator, um, retired, resigned, whatever, but we did hire on somebody new from, right from our township, Christina Durie. Um, lives in the township there, and it just so happened that she submitted some information, I think, prior to even Mr. Cypher resigning. I, I don't know how it happened, but yeah, so we hired her on as an interim basis, so, um, seems to be doing a good job, so. Just enter at some of these meetings, if we have, there are some, so. And that, I have nothing, um, next up, we are up to the German. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, too.